Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen regular meeting. Today is July 7, 2014. It's now 8:30 a.m. at the Green Community Center. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Selectman Bellistraci to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call. Item two, public forum, regarding any issue on the agenda, limited to three minutes. Anybody wishing to address the board on any agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move to item three, approval of the minutes. Three dot one, approval of the June 16, 2014, minutes for the regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item three dot two, approval of the June 23 special meeting reg-- minutes. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Item three dot three, approval of the minutes for the public hearing slash special meeting of June 30, 2014.
Who there at seven?
Second.
Any additions or corrections?
Only to comment that this may be the fastest meeting ever. Is it because we weren't there?
You're saying because you weren't there was bad.
Because we weren't there was bad.
All those in favor of acceptance?
Aye.
Two abstentions. All right. Thank you. Item four, Guilford Center for Children, Director Ashley Hiller. If I could come forward, please. Consider and take possible action on a certified resolution and non-discrimin-- excuse me, discrimination certificate for Guilford Center for Children empowering the first selectman to enter into an amended contractual instrument in the name on behalf of the town of Guilford with the Department of Social Services of the state of Connecticut for the child daycare program. Good morning. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Would you like to bring our attention here?
Just to ask you to enter into the agreement again. It's the same contract that you enter into year after year. That's why I'm here.
Okay. For the general public, this is an agreement that we have to enter into, like Ashley said, annually. It's required by the state of Connecticut since we lease the property to the daycare center. Is there any comment or questions? I'm going to need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Item five, five dot one, Director of Technology Kevin Mitchell, consider and take possible action on award of bid 31 dash 1314 wireless network hardware. Morning, Kevin.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good. We went out to bid for wireless network hardware. We got five bids. The low bidder was CDWG, a company we've done a lot of work with. The bid entailed purchasing 100 of these wireless access points, and then we had an alternate for additional if we had the money for that. My recommendation is that we enter into a contract with CDWG for a price of $735 per device and purchase 117 of these for a total of $85,995, which will bring us, it actually puts us over our budget by $2. But the deal is pretty good, so I think.
Do I gather from this that they bid, I'm sorry?
CDW listed on the bid sheet a price of $765. This is their proposal. We don't need this $30 device, and he had added that in there.
Okay. So now are you buying additional pieces?
Yeah. We needed, we need 109 to do a base install. 117 will finish off a couple of places that we hadn't originally put these, and at that price, I think that's a good deal for the town.
So the number on the bid sheet was for 100, but you're recommending 117. I just, I couldn't reconcile what was on our bid sheet in your memo.
And then this was the language in the bid. So we bid 100. So we committed to purchasing 100, and then we wanted to see what the additional cost per device would be.
So what is the amount, total amount of your purchase going to be? Okay. To Gary's point, I'm seeing 76,500 if I'm looking at the right vendor. You said CW?
Yes. Yeah. What we're doing is taking advantage of the alternate piece of the bid that we put in where they're allowing us to purchase additional access points at the same $735 apiece.
Joe.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks. Okay.
Okay. So if I'm doing the math right and going back to your memo.
The memo had a typo in there. I did that from my cellphone in the Adirondacks.
So it's 85,995?
Yes.
Okay. Which gets us to the 110,002. All right. I'm with you.
Sorry about that.
I'm with you now.
Limited resources last week.
And with kudos for him working on his cellphone in the Adirondacks, I would recommend that we accept bid number 311314 in the amount of $85,995 to purchase 117 pieces of Aruba AP 225 access points.
Is there a second?
Second. So do we add the alternate part or no? Take it to 110?
It's in the, it's in the total.
All right. So total cost 110,002, right?
I think the other part has already been.
Okay.
Has already gone through.
Okay. All right.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Now I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Item six, six dot one, Director of Operations and Facilities Cliff Girdam, discuss and take possible action to award contract for flooring replacement at the Adams, should say, middle school to Red Thread under the state bid. Morning.
Good morning. So this is part of the renovation that we're doing over at Adams this summer where we're renovating multiple rooms. This piece of the project just strictly does the flooring in the hallways. During the construction, obviously, we're going to tear up just about everything, so the carpet there is 10-plus years old, so we felt it would be a good time to replace that carpet since that whole area is being renovated. So Red Thread, who used to be BKM, does most of our flooring in the district, so they came out, give a proposal based upon the state contract price. It was reviewed with the Standing Building Committee. They did recommend moving forward with this, so we are here today to get approval to award the carpeting to Red Thread in the amount of $120,343.62.
If we award this today, they'll begin work when?
They will start, the demo is being done by Anuli. They're tearing out the carpet, so it's just a coordination with the carpet going back in, and obviously, it's going to go in just prior to school opening, so it's the last piece so that all the construction is done, so that we don't have any wear and tear on the new carpet with the construction that's going on in the classrooms and the main office.
Did you say another contractor was removing the carpet?
Correct. Yep.
This bid includes that.
Maybe I'm wrong then. Sorry. We're doing multiple flooring, so.
Well, the first line says provide labor and equipment to the foreigner following removal of existing carpet disposal.
So I misspoke there then. Sorry. Anuli's removing the asbestos stuff, so that's non-asbestos, so I'm sorry. They wouldn't be tearing that out, so we'll tear it out at the end of construction.
To Joe's point of schedule.
Yep.
If we do do it now, they still have enough time to?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. It's just coordination.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Who accept, is there a bid number on here?
Yeah. 120,343,062.
Oh, that's a dollar. Okay. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, Deputy Police Chief Jeff Hutchison, consider and take possible action on South Central Regional Special Weapons and Tactical Team Mutual Police Assistance Compact. Good morning. Good morning, gentlemen. Deputy Chief is joined by our Chief.
Let the deputy go over, but we've been working on this for some time now with the regional crisis team, trying to come up with a compact that covers this legally, so I'll let the deputy go in through what he's been working with, town council and other town councils and other PDs to try to put this document together. With that, it should save us some money with the regionalization. It saves us training time. It saves us how many people we have to assign to the team, which then saves us money and equipment, so it's a good joint effort, and I'll let Jeff explain to what we're trying to do.
Morning.
Welcome back.
Thank you. As the Chief said, we've been working for a couple of years on enhancing our ability to respond to certain situations, what you would normally see in common parlance, a SWAT team respond to. In the past, we've operated historically by ourselves, and by doing that, needed to assign and train a large number of people, 10 to 12, we're a small department, and that drained our resources pretty substantially. We then teamed up with Branford several years back and shared resources there and operated at a high level with them, but as time goes on, we start having, losing people to promotion and just normal retention issues, people retiring and leaving. So for the past couple of years, we've been working on expanding our regionalization efforts and identified several towns, as you can see from this document, I think you were all provided to beforehand, the towns of North Haven, East Haven, North Branford, Madison, Guilford, and Branford as a regional team. And in order to operate as a regional team, what we need to do, according to all the legal minds, is enter into this mutual police assistance compact. We currently, are participants in a municipal police assistance compact with 14 towns. This is specific to the operation of the crisis team or SWAT team, whatever, however you want to refer to it. So after several months of review and by the Chiefs and the deputies and the operators and the legal people, we felt this was the best way to move forward. We're recommended that we enter into the mutual police assistance compact. We have agreements in principle from all the participating towns. Several have already signed it, and we're looking for the Board of Selectmen to authorize the first selectman to sign on and participate in this. And an important thing to note is, as the Chief said, it's going to be a substantial savings for us. Our commitment of personnel drops from 10 to 12 down to four or five, so that alone is going to save us on the personnel side and training. So we think it's a good idea. We think we're going to continue to operate at a high level and give a lot of good services to the town with the assistance of these other towns.
I've had discussions with First Selectman Pearson of Madison and First Selectman Frieda of North Haven, and they both agree with the strategy and with the compact that they're all on board with the operation. If we were to proceed with this, it would save all towns, including Guilford, money and personnel, and we would share in equipment, and we all think it's a good idea, and I would hope heartily empower this board to vote for it.
What we've been doing for years, since we started with Branford and Madison, we've been checking each other, like we bought the command post, as you know, last year. We did that with them knowing, so they didn't buy one, so we had that vehicle available. We've been, also when we're buying equipment, rifles, we're making sure that they're interchangeable and that sort of thing, so they could be shared with the team. So it's been an ongoing effort. This just kind of expands it to some more other towns that would further reduce the cost.
I'll move that we move forward entering into this.
Second.
And authorize the first selectman to sign on behalf of Guilford. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
None on the motion. I just have sort of a question.
Sure.
You said four or five people in this six towns, so there's about 20 to 30 officers that are trained in this, and a typical unit in operation is a dozen. Did I gather that from reading through here?
Right. Depending on, you know, you have snipers involved here, you have negotiators that are involved, so, you know, it's important to have multiple.
So you have backups for every?
Correct. So you have a sniper.
People are on vacation, and people show up, and people are hurt, so, okay.
Right. So that's the problem we were having when we had an incident, is hopefully all of our people were around at the time. This now opens it up where you have multiple towns, so you have more people to pick from, and hopefully they're around. You know, this doesn't, you know, it's a regional team, so it does take a while for these people to come in, but that doesn't stop us from doing, you know, if there's an active shooting, we use our own personnel and go doing an active shooter thing, and we would do that until the SWAT team would arrive, and then we would make the plans and then use them as they showed up.
And it's under the command of the chief in the town in which the incident takes place?
Correct. So I would be in charge in Guilford, and in North Haven will be in charge in North Haven and that sort of thing. We had to do some way to keep the command that, and they'd be in the rules of Guilford at that time.
And I'm glad you brought that up here, because that was a question I was going to ask the Chief to comment on. I think we all, as first electmen and mayors, we all had the concern, well, who's in command in whose town?
Right.
And it would be the chief of that town.
Correct. And, you know, we would be in charge, but the group itself, the team itself, would elect, we would then elect a leader of that team, a lieutenant, to be in charge of the team, and then there'd be serges that we would approve as the chiefs to make sure that we do have some, you know, the right people in charge of that. So that seven or eight of us chiefs have to get together now and approve a commander of the whole unit.
And it doesn't drain our personnel if it wasn't our town?
Right. That's a nice thing. We've had a couple incidents in town where we've used a team with Branford, and we were lucky that we were able to draw from them, so they brought three or four people when we had three or four. We've been over to Madison a couple of times, where Branford, us, and Madison together would form a team, and then you have enough personnel to be able to deal with the situation you have.
Any further discussion, questions?
Terrific.
Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Item eight, Town Planner George Crawl, discuss and take possible action to award RFP 7-1314 Plan of Conservation and Development Consultant. I don't see George around.
Can you pay him a jester?
Reggie, are you pinch hitting for George or?
No.
Okay.
I'm here for another.
Okay. I don't see George around. Is he on his way?
No, I don't.
Well, I'm going to request that the board table this.
Brian, were you at the, you were at the meeting in which you interviewed these people and decided, correct?
Yes.
Could Brian?
I can make a few comments.
Could, can we just, Brian was part of this process, because I know, because I was, you know, I sat in for a little bit of it.
You're welcome to come before the board, Brian, if you'd like.
If we could dispense with it now by using Brian.
Well, the trouble I have, Gary, I don't have all the figures with me.
We do have the figures in our packet, so.
Oh, good. Karnak says. All right. We did, as part of the, as part of the planning, Plan of Conservation and Development process, we have a committee that's been working on this, and we wanted to use an outside source to try to consolidate all of the information we've been putting together, probably in a more cohesive manner, organize it, wordsmith it a little bit, help us with some of the graphics, mapping, some of the other things to make it more effective. So in that process, we interviewed, or we requested bids from four different companies. A small subcommittee reviewed the four proposals. We narrowed it down to two different companies to interview, and we chose, out of the two we interviewed, we chose Malone and McBroom.
Who was the other one you interviewed?
Planometrics.
Yeah.
And the biggest difference, while they were probably both very capable, Planometrics is a one-person operation, so we did have, the pricing was pretty close, frankly, the pricing was pretty close on all four of them, but we, in evaluating it, Planometrics is a one-person operation, so we had little concern about his ability to maintain our schedule and availability. He did have other projects lining up, and in the conversations, he just indicated, you know, I need to do it in certain windows, and we just weren't confident that we could all work together.
And the reason why you didn't look at BFJ planning, the lowest bidder, or was it because it's out of state, or, I'm not sure?
As I recall, that was an influence, Cindy, that just being out of state and having less understanding of Guilford, we thought there was probably going to be more training and startup and educating that would have to be done, whereas both Planometrics and Malone and McBroom know Guilford well, and we would save time and energy in that area.
Okay. Have we, do you know if we worked with Malone before?
Yes. Yes. Both of them have done a lot of town.
Okay. Which also, yeah.
Yeah. I'm trying to recall, is it the, Malone and McBroom actually just did some work on the coastal resilience, I believe it was Coastal Resiliency Project. So they're very familiar with the town, a lot of our resources, natural resources and everything else.
I think Planometrics did the charrettes for the initial.
Right. We were very comfortable with that, Charles, but it was at the point.
No, what's an argument for it, just an example? They've done work.
Yeah. Both have, and it really was kind of a tough decision to sort the two of them out. Malone and McBroom, though, did bring, they do have at least three people that'll be working on the project and maybe even access to a fourth if needed, so we kind of use that as a big differentiator, if you will, in looking at them.
I'll move that we award RFP number 7-1314 to Malone and McBroom for 24,750.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And George owes you the big one. Brian has become a utility person.
I just, I just thought, I knew he was part of it. It didn't make sense to table it.
He has sat in all the meetings. Town Engineer Jim Portley, nine dot one, consider and take possible action to purchase treated road salt and sand through the CROG bids. Morning, Jim.
Good morning. Good morning. Okay. The CROG went out to bid, got the results, let me attach them with the memo. We are in District Six, which is along the shore, starting in Greenwich. Our price is, for this year, was bid at, the low bid was Morton Salt at $83.10 a ton, and it's a little bit more than we've allocated in our budget. I think ours was 76 and change, so we're going to have to put it on with spoons rather than spreaders, but I would recommend the Board of Selectmen award the bid to Morton Salt for the price quoted.
Jim, what was the budget? Recall right now.
I looked at it Thursday, which was like 10 years ago. It was 76, 86 or something like that. It was, you know, it's six zeros are different from what we actually have for quotes, and there's not much you can do about it. I mean, we could look around, the people we were getting it from Cargo, they were more, they were up to $96 a ton. The price is, well, let me see. Cargo was 98, 89 to be exact. You know, the.
Is this considered in-season?
No. This is, Morton Salt bid was, you could buy it in-season for, it's, that's.
I'm just trying to read the bid sheets. It says we're paying the in-season price.
For Morton Salt, it was the same price.
It was the same.
Yeah. Yeah. There was, the vendors tried to offer an option where the out of season, they'd give you a better price. That's fine, but we, you know, we used the opportunity last year when the end of season would fill everything up with, we did it.
There literally is no price.
So we don't have any opportunity to buy it for the season.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah.
Lesser at this time of the year, do we have the storage capacity for this?
Yeah. The position last year, we were always under the gun, as you well remember. We couldn't afford to let the stockpile drop, so we kept it so we would be available any time to go out and respond.
You think that's what's driving it, because it was such a short, well, not a short supply, but we needed so much, like every town, every state in the Northeast needed so much last year.
I think it was such a scramble. I think they realized that they hadn't really set up the supply lines, so they, you know, having an incident like that, they, well, we don't want to be criticized again, so we're going to, we're going to put up, put together our supply lines, our storage facilities. You pay for that.
Starting to use that other system, starting to cut into our use of salt at all?
Well, this is the treated salt we use primarily up in North Guilford. It provides that, we put that down initially with a storm, it prevents the bond, you know, that snowpack situation you get, and with the temperature in the north, it's colder, there's more of an opportunity of that, so we get out there, first shot, try to get this stuff down. We don't use this all over. We tried last year, Joe and I had a conversation about, we're starting to use it maybe on Stepstone Hill and North Madison Road, because it's a heavily traveled area, and you get a fast approaching storm, you want to get something down there to prevent that snowpack. And it's, you pay more for it, there's no question about it. But, you know, we've all gotten used to having a black pavement, and people are not, unfortunately, not slowing down. They just, and they get very irritated when they can't just go out and travel the same time in January as they can in July to get from point A to point B. So we try to be responsive to that, but to be responsive, you have to, you know, you have to have the equipment and the materials, and as you see, it's a 10% increase in the materials. I wish it was a better answer for you, but that's what it is.
It is what it is.
It is what it is. People, they get desperate. They start calling. I mean, and, you know, we try to be responsive, and this is what it costs, part of the cost.
Okay. I'm going to need a motion.
So I'll move that we purchase the road salt and sand through the CROG bids to Morton Salt at 8310 a ton, I guess.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor? Thank you. Jim, nine dot two, discuss and take possible action on the master municipal agreement for right-of-way projects with the State Department of Transportation. Now, this issue is being discussed with the COG has stepped into this, as you know.
Right.
And we have a transportation committee meeting Wednesday.
Wednesday.
No. We had Friday off. We didn't have Monday off, so, okay. I would rather hold off on this until our next meeting and see what the COG thinks about it. For the board's purposes, Council of Governments wants a weigh-in on this for the purpose of discussion, doesn't feel that we should jump right into this master agreement. I don't know what weight they're going to pull every time the COG tries to get into one of these things. We lose, not we, the town, but the COG loses. I would give them the benefit of the doubt, and let's just wait before we sign into it. So unless you all disagree with me, I'd rather just hold off on this issue. Jim, you want to say anything?
I don't have, I don't have any, I don't think there's any urgency.
I don't think so.
Long Hill Road, we've had. Long Hill Road, we've, we've had a right-of-way acquisition plan approved by DOT, and it, it takes them out of the picture. We've met with all the people that we need to, and we've made modifications to the plan, so that the, the right-of-way that we will be acquiring, and we've talked to all the prop yours, will be donations, we don't have to go through any eminent domain or any other processes. So I have no, no problem putting it off, and I don't anticipate the way the funding is going, that we're gonna need it right away, so let it go.
I'll move that we table.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Nine three, remove from the table, take possible action, assign it for Benton Knoll subdivision road construction bond. Jim, you just wanna-
Yeah, Benton's Knoll is a subdivision down off Colonial Road, the St. George's Head area of town. The road was built back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. It needs a second course of paving, and there's some, some finished work along the town road that has to be done. But basically, the road's in good shape, and we did in, on, in December of two thousand and eleven, reduce, reduce the bond from two hundred and sixty thousand to two, to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I have no problem with reassigning the bond from the Guilford Savings Bank to the Dime Savings Bank. We've, we've, we've had bonds in banks throughout the state, it doesn't make any difference, as long as we have an account that's assigned to the town that can't be accessed by the developer, I have no problem with that.
Okay. First of all, you need a motion to remove from the table, I don't think I did that.
So moved.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we need a second motion to reassign the bond.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks, Jim.
We have chip seal?
Yep. I don't have that on my carryos. I have a early agenda, because I was out on Thursday, but discuss and take possible action to award a chip sealed contract to Empire Paving under state bid thirteen PSX zero two six two. Jim?
Right. Empire Paving and their, the division of that, of that company, New England Asphalt Services, did our chip sealing last year, and we were very, very pleased with, matter of fact, I came down across Town and Marsh Road this morning. One of the, just as an aside, the roads we chip sealed last year didn't have anywhere near the problems with a lot of the roads that we had previously, they sealed the roads, we don't have the puddles, and we don't have the issues that, like a Town and Marsh, Claver Hill to Route One, that we've had other places, and the same thing is true on, was it State Street, Little Meadow Road from State Street North up to, to, to North Madison Road. So I, they did do a good job, they have come to us, and they've, you know, they have the low, they've promised to give us the low price on the bid process through the state, which is a dollar forty-five dollars, a dollar forty-five cents per square yard, with an additional ten cents per square yard for the polymer additive that enhances the, the bond of the stone to the, to the asphalt emulsion. The base cost of the contract will be a dollar fifty-five per square yard. There were two issues in the past that caused some concern. One was the, there's a, it started, started in, as part of the state bid price or bid contract, there's a liquid asphalt adjustment, and there's a formula, and I've attached the Exhibit A, which is part of the state contract, that provides a liquid asphalt adjustment cost, and it has a formula, and at the end of this meeting, we're gonna have a test on that, on that adjustment, but realistically, it's something that, and it's, and you're gonna ask a contractor to bid in the fall for the next year's summer project, they have to have some kind of adjustment, unless, unless you're gonna be willing to pay for the, you know, gamble that, and you know what happens when you gamble, they can either really make a lot, or they can really be hurt, and somebody suffers. But this is an attempt to be fair in that process. I think right, right now, we're not in a position where we should have a real problem with that adjustment. And the second issue was the, the towns requirement performance and payment bonds. I've advised Empire Paving that they will have to provide the same bonding as anybody else, as part of the, the bonding provisions of the state contract do not cover the municipalities, it's just for the state, so I've advised them that they will have to provide that as part of the agreement that we have with them to do our work. So that being said, I would, I would recommend that the Board of Selectment award the chip seal contract to the two thousand and fourteen program to New England Asphalt Services slash Empire Paving for the price of a dollar fifty-five per square yard.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? Eric?
Jim, we've talked about this before, but the bonding in this particular case, I mean, your guys are with them essentially every hour that they're putting this down. I mean, what could go, what could go wrong that, that we would ever call a bond on them in, for this kind of a project?
It's, it's a good question.
And therefore, is there a cost of the bond that-
That we don't have to absorb?
That we don't have to absorb? And I'm intentionally not looking at Jack Ossoff.
Well, I, you know, I would add, it could be whatever the chemicals or whatever the mix is, is not, you know, is defective. I mean, I think he had, whatever, however they mix the, it's not my specialty, but there are ways that it could get screwed up, as shown in the past with the other-
Well, in the past, I think it was a number of things, but that is possible. You know, this is a mixture, and that's one of the reasons why we started doing this a couple of years ago, and after previous bad experiences, we started taking a test of the material every morning before we started. So we knew that the chemical composition of the, of the CRS, which is a, it's a, it's a particular kind of asphalt emotion, was, was according to specifications, and we do that every morning, we check the temperature, and are ready, ready there for them to have them go ahead. That is one of the issues, you know, realistically, if it starts breaking down and that's the cause, you won't know that right away. And you may experience it a couple of weeks later, but again, we don't pay right away, so I mean, we would wait. You know, I think it's part of doing business in this world now, that people expect to put up bonds for performance. If it was just a labor issue, that'd be one thing, but here, you do have a chemical that, that is part of the process, and I'm sure they have insurance for it, but say if the, the company that's putting it down has insurance policy for it, and the people manufacturing has insurance policy, we want to be covered also. So I think it's, yeah, it's a cost, it's a cost we don't want to absorb all the time, but we're gonna have to.
We had problems before, did we call the bond?
No, we, we went after the contractor, hadn't come back, cause he was trying to get repeated work.
If the contractor filed bankruptcy or had financial issues, it's another end protection.
I can't remember, at least for town projects, where we ever had to recall about.
But we've had contractors come back, because we didn't, we weren't happy with the job.
And it was, it was only, I think, through, we didn't, when we did Stepstone, North Madison Road, that contract, it was only after we contacted the bonding company that we got some action out of these guys. And they, they kept giving us the runaround, oh, we're gonna get back, we're gonna get back. When their bond was threatened, and they-
They let her back.
They were, they were facing the situation where they could possibly lose bonding, we'd bring somebody else in there, which would, you know, they have an arrangement, if they want to get their bonding back, they have to, they have to pay the bonding company back for any excess of what they, they covered for. That was the only reason we got them back, I believe, or at least got them back expeditiously. Cause they were, they were willing to just leave us with a patchwork job up there, but we were adamant that we weren't gonna accept that, and then they finally did come to the table.
It's like you were saying with the price of asphalt before, it's a little bit of a gamble, and you're just covering yourself, is what it comes down to. I mean, you never know when that one shot. I mean, we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars here for the bond.
Well, probably, talking about five or six thousand, I think that's what it was last year, something like that.
Is a motion on the table, seconded, any further discussion? See none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Item ten, consider and take possible action on a request to waive section two fourteen dash two, small a of the town code to allow the serving of alcoholic beverages, excuse me, during the St. George Men's Group Golf Tournament at the Guilford Lakes Golf Course on September sixth, twenty-fourteen, reigning date September thirteenth.
Bob, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
This was a waiver that we granted last year-
Yes, sir.
For the St. George Men's Club, and Bob, you wanna give us a little-
Yeah, well, as Joe said, it'd be September sixth, the reigning date of the thirteenth. We did it last year, same charity, St. Martin de Porres Academy and the Guilford Fund for Education. We go around twice, we play two rounds with eighteen holes, and last year, we did well for the first time out. I think people had a good time. I think we're about halfway sold with the tickets so far, so we're up to last year's level, I think. And it went without a hitch last year, thank God, and we'll, we are requesting that we could serve beer and wine and get a permit, which we got last year, and we also insured it through the Catholic Church, one of the Catholic Church for the five oh one three C. And I think last year, we were able to get half a million dollar coverage for occurrence to cover any situation that, that may arise in the unlikely event, and that's about it.
I, I do have a, an email, I believe it was in your packet-
Yep.
From the chairman of the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission, that basically says that the commission does not have any issue with granting this waiver.
I'll move that we approve a waiver of section two fourteen dash two A to allow you to serve alcohol beverages during this event.
Do you have a second? Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Good luck to you.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Are you doing the Oktoberfest again?
No, we're not.
Oh, you're not?
Not this year, no.
Oh, I got, that's fun, okay.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Thank you.
Okay, go sit, thank you. Item eleven, Appointments and Resignations Act on a Recommendation to Move KJ Lee from alternate to the regular member on the Harbor Management Commission for a term to begin August first, twenty fourteen, and expire July thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I thought we had, you had initiated a process where we, for people who were gonna be renominated or moved, that we would have an updated resume or information. I have, I have no objection to any of the four people, four of the five people that are on there, but we don't have any information on them.
On moving them up, we did not have any applications, and I didn't see a reason for that, for new, new ones we do, okay? Unless I miscommunicate-
New ones are reappointments.
Reappointments, no, are new applicants, new positions.
Like Allison, we do have a resume.
I understand.
Okay.
But we had an issue a couple of months ago, where you asked to table some, some reappointments because we didn't have any information on them.
We didn't have an application?
We didn't have an application.
Yeah. And this was just moving it up, it wasn't a reappointment?
On the Harbor Management people?
Right, right.
Correct, okay.
Eleven two, Act on a Recommendation to Move, again, Chris Teasen from an alternate to a regular member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term to begin August first, twenty fourteen, and expire July thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Act on a Recommendation to Appoint Allison Varian to the Shellfish Commission to Fill a Vacancy for a Term to Expire February twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen.
So moved. Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Allison's a former chairman coming back, so that's a great asset.
Okay, and there's been a lot of requests to bring her back, I might add. Act on a Recommendation to Repoint Sue Robbins to the Park and Recs and Recreation Commission for a Term to Expire February twenty-eight, twenty eighteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain again, I would like to have seen for Sue, and I have no objection specifically to Sue or Jeffrey, but I would like to see their application.
Okay. So noted. Act on a Recommendation to Repoint Jeff Hedberg to the Board of Police Commissioners for a Term to Expire June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, one abstention, okay, thank you. Request for the use of town properties?
I would move that we approve the signed placement for the Shoreline Chamber and the, the use of the green for the Raise the Roof project, as described in the agenda.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Trace, did you so note that we need the applications again? Thank you. Committee reports, other any?
Paul, any other requests in the time? Just that the documents are back at the Massachusetts Historic Society, and the curator, we met with a curator, and I requested photocopies, professional photocopies of the documents, and he said in about a month, he'll get those to us, including some other documents that they have that were signed, written and signed by William Leet. So we'll get a package of, of the documents that they have that pertain to Guilford.
So you didn't try to hide them and eat your bed?
No, no, couldn't do that.
Okay, and the coming events this weekend will be the community picnic, fireworks-
Fireworks.
And the medical service on Sunday the thirteenth, that's right, okay, thank you. Old business? New business, I have nothing. Public forum, limited to three minutes on any item.
Sorry, I was waiting for your earlier discussion, I heard that, and I want to also contribute it, and make sure you don't have any other questions, but I gather you did move on our recommendation.
Oh, Brian did what, what?
Okay, thank you. Sorry I was late.
Consider and take possible action on an appeal from a resident in accordance with section two four seven dash three one, right of appeal, Article seven elderly tax relief program. This, an executive session, will be required. I'm gonna ask the resident to remain, and the assessor, representative of the assessor's office. And I think that's all we have here, okay? Do you need a motion to go into executive? Yeah, I just want to see if there's anybody else who wants, who is, has interest in this issue. Seeing none, okay. Pam, are you going to executive session with us or not? Yes, okay, alright, and then, or in-house counsel. Reggie, you-
I may be here for backup.
Okay, and our enforcement officer, and I see our assessor, he's hiding behind the camera, I didn't see you. I'll need a motion to go to executive session? So moved.
So second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Mike, who'll be coming back for a vote? Executive session, please?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a second motion to deny the appeal?
I would move that we deny the appeal.
Second.
As presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.